Okay, it looks like we're all good. We're gonna call this meeting to order. Uh, we know Dr. Leonard is not able to be here tonight, so we don't need to wait. Madam Clerk, if you would please call the roll.
Good evening. Councilman Jindal?
Present.
Councilman Rigsby?
Here.
Mayor Portem Daily?
Here.
Mayor Duper?
Present.
We have a quorum.
Thank you very much. We're gonna start out with our invocation and pledge of allegiance by Dr. Daily. Join me in bowing our heads. Father God, we live in a difficult and troubled world, and we thank you for the many ways in which he blesses. And we thank you for our city, the collegiality and friendship that we have. And we pray tonight that you will be with our country and that you will be with this council as we explore and discuss issues before us. We ask these things in your name. Amen. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Mr. City Manager, are there any items to be added or deleted?
No, sir.
Okay, we're gonna start out with our non-agendized items for public participation. And I know we have one speaker that's gonna be speaking via proctor. Lorena, is this the one that you're gonna talk about? Okay. And she's gonna be speaking on behalf of Sergio Matarita. I'm gonna guess this might be a relative.
Yes, that is my father. So I am going to summarize his letter that he is presenting to you guys today. I did not write it for him, but he did get assistance from my mother. But before I summarize his letter for you, I just wanna let you know that once we got all the signatures and we finalized the Friendship City, there was a lot of verbal activity over there and excitement in Costa Rica. So I just wanted to play about 20 seconds of some of that excitement for you on the phone.
Para que haga una invitación a toda la municipalidad de Loma Linda y nombrar ahí algún pueblito pero cerca de la bocana Loma Li.
Este, me da mucho gusto saber de esta relación de hermandad hermano entre Punta Arenas y Loma Linda. Así que, en lo que podamos colaborar y ahí estamos a la orden.
Last one.
Pero ustedes te vas al YouTube y ponés el pitch clean up machine y ponés la barber, la short rate barber. Es como color verdesita, las seis.
There was a lot more than just three comments, but basically they were throwing out so many wonderful and different ideas of what we can do with this friendship opportunity. So on to the letter. Again, this is a summarized version, but you guys have the complete copy in front of the dais. I am the mayor of Loma Linda and esteemed council members. Please accept my humble gratitude for the recently established friendship relationship between Loma Linda, California, and Punta Arenas, Costa Rica. As a resident of Chita Island, part of Punta Arenas, president of the Chita Island Tourism Chamber, and proud father of Loma Linda's Community Development Director, Lorena Matarita, I look forward to expanding our knowledge and friendship with each other and the people of our communities. Our common appreciation of living healthily and sustainably opens up many opportunities for cooperation that we hope will mutually encourage our residents. The people of Punta Arenas are so excited to hear about your friendship that they are considering ways to honor Loma Linda on the island and to invite people from Loma Linda to enjoy another Blue Zone paradise where people live long, happy lives. Ideas have ranged from a plaque at the entrance of the island port, a children's play yard, or park near a school, or even naming a newly cleaned beach Playa Loma Linda. Perhaps you or your staff might have other suggestions for us to consider. While reciprocity of effort is always nice between friends, we do not want you to feel obligated to do the same or think we are asking for funding. We consider it an opportunity to invite friends to a celebration. We consider this as an opportunity to invite friends to a celebration in their honor. As you know, Loma Linda boasts an outstanding university, first-rate hospital, and medical care, beautiful streets and parks, and a responsive government that respects the desire of its citizens. While we will probably never boast of such things on the island, the municipality of Punta Arenas is currently working on rebuilding our earthquake-damaged hospital into a finer, more modern building. They are redesigning the long, beautiful beach promenade, and they are promoting education as a priority for the youth. I hope that we can challenge and encourage each other in our endeavors to the improvement of both our communities and residents. As I have shared a bit of our story, development, and vision, I look forward to learning about yours so we may celebrate common victories along the way as good friends do. I know that you have many concerns on your plate as leaders, but I hope knowing there are other leaders but I hope knowing there are other leaders in another small part of the world holding your own their hope and thoughts will strengthen and bring joy as you serve. Please consider this an open invitation to visit Punta Arenas and Chita Island in Costa Rica. Thank you once again for engaging our cities in a friendship that I hope lasts a long time and brings value to both sides as part of the world's smallest Blue Zones. Speaking for my community and for my family, we appreciate each one of you, and I hope to get to know you better as our friendship grows. May God bless you and those you serve. Serio Matarita Moreira.
Thank you. Okay, moving on to our scheduled items. All right, we have another speaker, but that's on item number one. And item number one is a proclamation designated, designating Loma Linda as a Purple Heart City. And I'm looking to see if Mr. Raymond Wetzel is out there or no.
He contacted me and was unable to attend today's meeting, so I'm gonna read the proclamation.
Okay. Well, we do have a proclamation. We'll read it real quick. And being a city with multiple VA facilities and a long history tied to our armed forces and men and women of the, of the military, we're very proud to do this. Whereas the citizens of Loma Linda have great admiration and the utmost gratitude for all the men and women who have selflessly served their country and this community and the armed forces and have borne the brunt of battle. And whereas veterans have paid the high price of freedom by leaving their families and communities and placing themselves in harm's way for the good of all. And whereas the contributions and sacrifices of the men and women from the city of Loma Linda who served in the armed forces have been vital in defending the hard-won freedoms and liberties of our constitution that are treasured by our citizens. And whereas the city of Loma Linda as a national health center and home to the Jerry L. Pettis Veterans Medical Center welcomes our wounded and disabled veterans and world-class treatment and support. And whereas many citizens of our community have been awarded the Purple Heart Medal in recognition of being wounded while engaged in combat with an enemy force, a singularly meritorious act of essential service. Now therefore, be it resolved that the City Council of the City of Loma Linda hereby proclaims Loma Linda as a Purple Heart City to honor the service and sacrifice of our nation's men and women in uniform wounded or killed by the enemy while serving to protect the freedoms enjoyed by all Americans and to remember and recognize veterans who are recipients of the Purple Heart. Signed and presented this day, the fourteenth of March, 2023. We don't have anybody to come up and take a picture, but, uh, but we will ship this off to them, so. All right, Dick, you wanted to speak about it. Come on forward.
Mr. Mayor, Council, Staff, and People in the Audience. When I read that, it brought home to me. I don't know how many of you are aware, you've probably heard of the Shrine Hospital in LA, or Shriners. Masons are the organization. And for a total of about 30 years, I was involved with the Dean Ray's, which are the young men, 12 to 21. After I got through as being head of Dean Ray, they asked me to be on the installing team. And I did that for quite a few years. And the junior installing counselor presents the flag. And there's a little speech that goes along with that. That's what brought it home to this. In respect to what you're just talking about and the flag, I'll take parts of this and put it with what you were talking about. What we did in the installation, I have the honor of bringing the flag in or having it brought in. Then we explain why. What does it mean to the Dean Ray's? And it starts about in the middle, and I'm gonna add some words to it. That we place this flag at our altar or in our council chambers or meeting places as a symbol of civil liberty for which there could no be, be no freedoms. And as we go through it, at the end we say, we instill in the gentlemen that the red on that flag, the red and glorious red, is all the blood that is shed by our young men. Now, I add to that the ones that are doing this to our military people, to our firefighters, and to our law enforcement. It doesn't mean you have to die on the field to get honored that way. But when you see that flag, think about it. There are a lot of people that put their lives out there for people. And do you ever see them or thank them? Very seldom is walked right on by, or in some cases, they have no love for them. But this is every time, as I say, when you see this and you see that red, think about them and thank them for their honors. The second thing I'd like to mention was, Joe Fink called me today, and he said, would you mention to councilpeople that at the end of the month, he doesn't know what's 29th, 30th, is National Veterans Day? So hopefully that doesn't pass without being noticed, but just a little bit that we take for granted, we look at the flag, and that's it. So I thank you for the opportunity.
Thank you for your, your words. Okay, um, we are moving on to a public hearing on Council Bill R-2023-03, which is a resolution to determine the semi-annual, or not semi, that's bi, was it biannual or semi-annual? Semi-annual, I had it right. Weed abatement costs. So, Fire Department.
Good evening, Council. Thank you for having me. Be here to talk about the Fall 2022 Weed Abatement Program and to recommend that the Council receive the report, approve the report, account of the costs, and adopt the accompanying resolution of establishing liens and assessments on the properties. We had another successful weed abatement program this year by keeping those outstanding liens and notices to a bare minimum. Uh, we started on September 27th and continued into the 28th. We inspected approximately 435 parcels, as we do each season. 91 notices to clean property, which you can see in your packets as Exhibit A, were mailed out on October 12th to the owner of record. Received back only four letters as returned to sender, and those letters were posted on the properties themselves physically. Uh, the return notices were posted physically, and the follow-up inspections began on November 1st and continued to the 2nd. Uh, we also granted a time extension, as always, of two weeks to anyone that reached out and asked for one, wished for one. The contractor that is, that works for the city only performed work on five parcels this year, one of them being a housing authority property that was pre-approved. Uh, another one was, that is not listed on your outstanding liens and notices list, was called for over the phone and paid to the Finance Department. So that's why you only see three out of the five. On January 3rd, 2023 invoices that you'll see on Exhibit B, specify the cost of the work performed by the contractor plus the city's administrative fees, were mailed to the owner of record, and they were had the opportunity to make payment until tonight, March 14th. The unpaid outstanding weed abatement notices are on Exhibit C. We had no adverse environmental impacts, and that concludes my report for today. Any questions, feel free to ask.
Yes, that's, see, I don't wanna jinx it, but it seems to be getting lower and lower. Deal. Questions? Seeing no questions up here, we'll open the public comment. Anyone wishing to speak on this item, please come forward. Seeing in the throngs of the audience, there's nobody rushing, we'll go ahead and close the public comment and move to a motion. No, that's all right. We have a first and a second. No, 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 it's all right. We have a first and a second. And Madam Clerk, would you please call the roll on that?
Motion is to receive the Fall 2022 Weed Abatement Program report. Approve the report and accounting costs and adopt Council Bill R-2023-03, a resolution of the City Council of the City of Loma Linda adopting a report and statement of expenses for Fall 2022 Weed Abatement Program and imposing a lien upon property for payment thereof. Councilman Jindal?
Yes.
Councilman Rigsby?
Yes.
Mayor Portem Daily?
Hi.
Mayor Duper?
Yes.
Item was approved.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Uh, moving on to item number three is a joint meeting of the City Council on the Housing Authority regarding our mid-year budget review. So we'll go ahead and open up the Housing Authority. And Sonia?
Sean, there should be a presentation in the public drive. Good evening, uh, Mayor, Council Members, and City Staff, members of the public. Thank you for joining us tonight. We're gonna review the mid-year budget. I have, uh, put in front of you a revised cash summary schedule. The only thing that changed is rounding. Uh, we round everything to the nearest hundred, and I, we missed a little bit. So there's a total difference of $89. The slides are based on the corrected amount, and the staff report is correct. First, we're gonna go over the general fund revenue changes. The, the next two slides, you, you will see the numbers summarized, and they come from Attachment 2, which is summary of revised revenues that were attached to the staff report. So as you will see here, um, the revenues are, are looked at and analyzed over the span of about five years based on a historical, uh, activity. And some of the numbers also come from outside agencies, depending on what they are. So first, we're gonna go over property tax. Property tax, uh, we're projecting an increase of 176,600. And we get that information directly from the Otter Controller's Office. For franchise fees, we, we show 255,200 increase. It's an estimated amount, and it's based on receipts year-to-date, as well as transfer in prior years. Sales tax, we show it, and this amount is net of any economic incentives. We show that there's a decrease of 258,600. Part of this number, um, has to do with, um, about 600,000 that we were, um, remitted to the city in fiscal year 2022, but it didn't belong to the city, it belonged to a, another city. And so they filed a claim, and they were granted because it belonged to them. So that's gonna be, that was already deducted from our revenue, so that cost a little bit of a change. So there was a little bit of sales tax increase that's gonna be projected.
Which line item was that?
It was for Ontario.
No, which, um?
Oh, for sales and use tax.
Got it. Thank you.
And then the next number is the transient occupancy tax. That's our TOT. We show a projected increase of 101,700. And I did a conservative estimate. I didn't include, um, Candlewood, which I believe is now open? Or soon, will be open soon. So it's kinda hard to estimate that number, so I, we didn't include anything for them, but we're projecting an increase of 101,700. And this also includes, it's netted with the economic incentive.
Quick question on that one.
Yes.
So does that mean the, um, the incentive that we provided to the new building that's gonna be built, that has been subtracted from the amount?
I don't believe that application has been completed.
She's talking about a two existing hotel that, right?
There's only one that's approved.
There's only one that has been sent in right now.
Okay, so, does that mean it's been subtracted?
Correct. We subtract that off, yes. We subtract that out, yes.
Licenses and permits, we, I'm only highlighting the, the highest numbers. So license and permits, uh, we're projecting an increase of 129,300. And we're seeing an increase of building permits and fire permits, as well as fire plan checks. Uh, Lorena says they're quite busy right now, and so that's a very good thing. For use of money and property, I projected an increase of 274,500, and that's due to, we're seeing an increase also in interest revenue. I, I'm hoping that it, they continue to increase. Um, the latest interest rate for September 30th was at 1.35%, and the one for December 31st was at 2.07%. And then the yield in February was 2.624%. And all of this is from an interest rate of .75% at June 30th, so hopefully.
We can't go any higher, we'll lose more banks.
The other, uh, large amount is the other number, the other revenue. That's 1.355, 1,000, 1,355,400. And that is due to, um, we had a, a refund and reimbursements from mutual aid for reimbursements for, uh, fire incidents. And then also JPI reimbursees us for employees that are out in workers' comp. And as well as, um, we had a, a payment made by a developer where they had a developer agreement, and that was high growth. And so we're projecting a 1.3 million increase for that. Intergovernmental also increased by 250,300. And that was mainly VLF, property tax alue, and that was a number that came from the property tax assessor's office. So all in all, 2,166,600 increase in revenues is projected. And operating transfers in, that was a decrease as well, and you'll see that again later on. Um, that has to do with the gas tax. The state revised our numbers, and it's projecting a little bit lower, so operating transfers in is lower by 74,800. This is the other, um, funds. The enterprise funds are first, the sewer fund. Uh, the main increase is charges for services. And this is just, um, a change that I'm showing for the last five years. We're projecting it to come in a little bit higher. For LCCP Connected Communities, there's a, a decrease in network infrastructure certification amounts collected from prior years, so we projected a, a decrease for this year. For the water fund, uh, we see that the interest rate is increasing, so we projected an increase in use of money and property for the interest. And then as far as other, um, that's for, we've projected a, a bit of an increase for late fees with SB 998. We cannot collect, um, late fees and do shut-off notices. We have a certain timeframe. But we are seeing that the late fees are quite high. I think people got used to not having any. And so hopefully, you know, they're not, they don't come in that high, but um, this last month, it was about $10,000. The other funds are the Enterprise Special Revenue Grant, Capital Projects, Special Districts, Debt Service, and Housing Authority. The major one is the Grant Fund. The majority of the 241,100 is a reimbursement that we received from the state for the baseball field lighting that was spent in fiscal year 22, but we revert, we received the reimbursement this year. And then also we're recognizing revenue for the COPS grant for the purchase of the, the flock cameras. And then for, um, special rev, uh, special districts, we're seeing a little bit of an increase as well in projected revenue. And special revenues, uh, I show, I'm projecting a decrease, and that's based on the gas tax, based on what the state numbers say. So all in all, the city changes in revenues is a total of 537,100.
Question?
Yes.
What are special districts?
That's, uh, landscape and street maintenance district.
Okay, thank you.
And because this is a joint meeting, I forgot to mention the Housing Authority. We show a decrease of $4,600. And that's for interest that's coming in. The, we show the interest that's paid through the bank coming in a little bit higher. However, the loans that are being repaid back are coming in lower, so we reduced the loan interest and, for a net change of 4,600. Next is the expenditure changes, and the, these you can see, um, in the expenditure adjustments that are in Attachment 3. And these are requests from departments, requests or changes that we, um, analyzed during our review. For administration, the request is to increase expenditures by 123,500. And this is to cover an increase on salaries and benefits that have been recalculated based on personnel changes and/or corrected from the original calculation, as well as increases in utilities, software and licenses, and contractual agreements. Community development, they are requesting an increase, but it's being offset by salary and benefit savings due to vacancies, uh, one of which was recently filled. Police services, um, it's just a minimal $500 increase due to software and licenses. Fire services, uh, one, they are requesting an increase of 1,417,600. And the main increase is for overtime for fire strike teams and also for regular overtime. So in total, it's 1.3 million.
So what, what this is, is we went to fight fire up north, and then we get reimbursed back, so.
Is there a line item, how much we got back? So our expenditure change net would be 400K increase.
But again, we also get payback from, uh,
JPIA for the, uh, the firemen that got injured, and, and so work, but work a conversation, reimburse us back.
So if we're seeing our expenditure, which is negative, um, because we're paying more out, is 1.4 million? How much are we getting back to the audience?
It's probably close to 1.2, right?
Uh, if you look at the other, in the revenue changes, the amount other, it's 1,355. About 300,000 of that was from a developer, so about 1 million. And that's just timing, because, uh, the state has a lag time on reimbursing.
Yeah, I was gonna say, it reverses, it's like a year late, right?
Yeah.
So what we got now is from what we had
Right, correct.
Last year or the year before that.
Correct.
So I guess, um, what I'm trying to ask is, are we gonna break even, or do we?
No, because, because they're still, because the fire department is pretty big. We still have employee that, that got sick, got injured, and have to fill in the position by, by.
That's not all the external, some of it's internal too.
Correct.
Small percentages internal for staffing and stuff like that, but.
For overtime. We, we break even on state, correct?
Yeah, they always, they always pay, they always pay us back for what we spend with them. But the reality is that also includes internal expenditures we have to, so.
The remaining amount is for miscellaneous needs such as increased utility costs, software licenses, professional services like donkey mitigation, transport and feed, repairs and maintenance for vehicles such as the medic squad, and refresh, refurbishment of this Schmeele engine. Sorry, I can't pronounce that. Um, and then for public works, they're requesting four hundred and thirteen thousand six hundred. This is for repairs and maintenance of facilities, the purchase of lighting equipment, increased refuse collections, submittals based on amounts collected and salaries recalculations based on, um, retirements or position changes, vacancies, et cetera. Next are the enterprise funds and special district capital, and then the special revenue and housing authority. And again, these requests are in the third attachment of the staff report. The sewer fund, increased cost for contractual, contractual agreements, but the main increase is due to an increase in sewer pasture fees to the city of San Bernardino, and it's consistent with the amounts collected. L S C C P increased fifty-one thousand one hundred for, and it's for the expansion needs and technology systems. The water fund is requesting four hundred and seventeen thousand two hundred. And the main, uh, main reason for the increase is due to increased utility costs, repairs and maintenance, contractual agreements, and software licenses across the board, as well as salary, salary recalculations due to position changes, vacancies, and retirements. The special revenue funds, uh, has a decrease. And again, this is due to gas tax revenue. Normally it's transferred over to the general fund, since not as much revenue is coming in, the transfer's lower. Special districts, which is the landscape and the street lighting districts. Uh, there's an increased cost in maintenance to cover repairs and maintenance, utilities, and utilities for the remainder of the year. So across the board, there was an increase in utilities, so you'll see that, um, in the detail. The capital funds are requesting one hundred and thirty-three thousand two hundred. And this is a recalculation of overhead based on supplemental appropriations approved throughout the year. And then for the housing authority, there's an increase in, uh, software and license costs. For a total of three million one hundred eighty-six thousand eight hundred. And in this slide, uh, we see a recap of, the next two slides, you'll see a recap of the, the effect of these changes. So as you can see here, the general fund, unassigned, um, we're requesting or proposing an increase of two million one hundred sixty-six thousand six hundred in revenues and expenditures of one thousand nine hundred eleven thousand for a net change to fund balance of, uh, a decrease of two hundred and fifty-five thousand, I'm sorry, increase of two hundred and fifty-five thousand six hundred. And then for the sewer fund, the net increase or decrease will be two hundred and thirty-nine thousand four hundred. For connected communities, a decrease in total of sixty-three thousand three hundred. For water operations, a decrease of three hundred and fourteen thousand six hundred. For a total for the enterprise funds of six hundred and seventeen thousand three hundred. This is the net, uh, change that will, if you approve these changes. In that for all the remaining funds, it will be a total of one hundred and twenty-one thousand four hundred decrease to fund balance for these funds. For housing authority, it'll be a decrease of four thousand eight hundred. This slide, uh, gives you, uh, a recap of the beginning and the ending fund balance for each fund. So this is primarily for the general fund. The beginning estimated fund balance during twenty-twenty-three budgeting process was eleven million seven hundred and thirty-five thousand five forty-one, which is based on the twenty-two mid-year projected numbers plus any adjustment in revenue or expense, expenditures we foresee happening. At year end, in the audited financial statements, total fund balance increased by four million four hundred and seven thousand four hundred and twenty as a result of operations, as well as a one-time funding split into two years, ARPA funding, which has been fully used to cover fire salary costs. Audited fund balance for the general fund was seventeen million twelve thousand two hundred and sixty-nine. However, adding back the fair value adjustment needed for accounting purposes and reducing it for the assigned items such as refuse receivable, fire equipment replacement sewer loan, as well as non-spendables like pre-pays, the increase was four point six million from the beginning estimated fund balance. During the year, council has approved additional expenditures through staff reports, and those numbers have been updated and reflected in the total expenditure and uses number, as well as requests we just reviewed. Net change to the general fund, if the proposed changes are approved, will be an increase of one million seven hundred and twenty-seven thousand four hundred. And as you can see, we still have not changed the general fund assigned or committed amounts. They are still one million two hundred fifty thousand for assigned, which is the capital equipment replacement fund. And then the committed for rainy day reserve. In the, this slide, the summary changes in fund balance by type. We have the sewer, the connected communities, and the water operations. We plugged in all of the revenues and all of the, all of the expenditures. And the sewer fund will, will have a net change of three hundred and forty-two thousand seven hundred, and it'll be a decrease. Uh, with the water, we'll have a decrease of one hundred and fifty-one thousand nine hundred. I'm sorry, yes, and the connected communities, two hundred and ninety-seven thousand two hundred. I'm sorry, I had that backwards. Connected communities, one hundred and fifty-one thousand nine hundred, and then water, two hundred and ninety-seven thousand two hundred, increased. And then, uh, enterprise capital funds. If these changes are, um, approved, you will see, uh, I didn't calculate it, but there will be a three million one hundred and ten thousand dollar change. And if you recall, uh, when we first adopted the budget, this is due to the one point six million gallon reservoir. This next slide, uh, goes over all the other funds for the city. The special revenue fund will, if you approve these changes, will have a decrease in fund balance of five hundred and twenty-nine thousand one hundred and thirty-five. And if you recall, uh, from what has been approved, the major difference or the major reason why this is decreasing is due to California street widening from Redlands Boulevard to Orange. In the grants fund, uh, we show an increase of one hundred and sixty-six thousand six hundred. And this is due to the reimbursement from the state for the baseball field lighting. In the capital projects funds, uh, we see a decrease of six point four million. This mainly anticipated loan from the special projects construction, construction fund, loaning the money to, um, the water acquisition fund to be able to build the one point six million gallon reservoir. And then for special districts, we see a decrease of one hundred and thirty-two thousand four hundred. We've, uh, already mentioned the, the changes for that. For debt service, there's a three hundred dollar increase due to interest rate increases. And then for the housing authority, that'll be a sixteen thousand one hundred dollar decrease. So in total, the city, um, will have forty-two million seven hundred and thirty-eight thousand and twenty-two dollars in fund balance. This concludes the summarized version of the budget. Staff recommend that council approve revenue increase of two million seven hundred and three thousand, seven, I'm sorry, two million seven hundred and three and seven hundred dollars. And appropriation increase of three million one hundred sixty-nine thousand nine hundred dollars as presented in the summarized by funds in attachments two and three respectively. Do you have any questions?
Thank you, any questions?
I got two questions. Can we reference the, um,
Yes.
The big budget? Alrighty, um, these are more organizational questions, so I'm gonna start with my favorite one, which is always line one seventy-one. Um, for the landscape maintenance district, since we're taking, uh, since we're transferring income into that fund, how come this isn't zero or negative? So like some of the other ones that are negative, how come this doesn't go in a negative?
So if you look at the estimated ending available, one seventy-one, which is the landscape, it's gonna end the year with three million two hundred and ninety thousand dollars. More, I mean, we're estimating to end at three million two hun, I'm sorry, three thousand two hundred and ninety dollars.
Are you referring to line one seventy-one?
Yes.
It's ending in how much?
Three thousand two hundred and ninety dollars.
Yeah, so that's my question, like how come that's zero or not, or, or, how come that is not zero or negative? Since we're transferring income in?
So you're saying we should adjust the transfer in so that it zeros out?
Yeah, so the other way, yeah, um, like why don't we transfer in one hundred and fifteen? Is there a reason we do one twenty?
Right, if not, if you don't transfer in, it'll be negative. So landscape assessment district never have enough money to maintain the existing landscape area. And the reason for that is the first fifty-eight district, and then we have a cost escalation in it. So the revenue that we receive is the same as we received thirty years ago. But the cost for, for maintaining those landscape has increased a lot. So we have to subsidize, uh, the cost from the, from the general fund.
Okay, so comparing that fund to line three or four, how come we allow the parks development fund to go in a negative instead of breaking even, but we don't do that for one seventy-one?
Which line, three and four?
Three or four parks development?
Yes, the park development is, is come from the, um, the development impact fee. So, um, um, you said three or four?
Yes.
Oh, yes, and the reason is we, it went negative as we spent more money than the revenue. What happened is, many years ago, we borrowed the money from park, the, the impact fee to purchase the land up in the hill. And so, so we have to take the, the money from this account to pay back the, uh, the money that we borrow to purchase the land in the South Hill.
So is this going, at the end of the year, is this line item, when I look at it, at the ending available cash balance, is that gonna be zero? Or is that gonna continue to be negative?
Well, this is a, a, a budget, so it's not, depending on how the, the money's coming in, I have a repayment budgeted here that has not been done yet. So at the end of the year, I'll look at the available cash, and if there's no cash to make that payment, then I won't make it.
Got it. Okay, I think I'm good.
I had a question back to you, uh, chief refurb of the Schmeele. Is that the former, um, medic truck? Or no, that's, and then what, what's the plan? Is that gonna be a reserve, or what was the?
Yeah, the, the refurb is for what will be our reserve. We have a, a real old Central States engine that's beyond its time. But it, we're kinda keeping it around while we're getting this refurb done. And once the refurb done, this engine will be kinda, you're, you're getting basically almost a brand-new engine for a couple hundred thousand versus like six hundred thousand. So it'll give us a good long time in reserve. We'll get rid of the Central States, and then that Schmeele will be hanging around as a reserve for a while. And so it's kind of a better use of money.
Okay. That was all I had, any other questions? Okay, do we?
I got one more follow-up.
Yes, sir.
Going back to line three or four. So you said if we don't have money in the fund, we're not gonna make, um, we're not gonna do the re, repayment, correct?
Correct.
Okay. It's a loan, so I'm assuming the loan has to be repaid, or we can push that out?
It's, it's an advance that was done many years ago to pay, um, for the South Hills. And so it, there's uh, no, like payment schedule set up, so we pay as money's available to make the payments. And so if money's not available, then we can't repay.
Okay, so if I take that three hundred out, there's still a deficit of one hundred and fifty-two thousand, um, does that mean it's gonna?
Yes, the, the reason for that is, right now, I budgeted like half a million dollar to do improvement at the, uh, at the Heritage Park. But I have not spent all the money yet. And in the meantime, when we ready to, if we don't spend the money, then, then it should be in balance. Or if not, by next year, we have more revenue coming in.
So if we don't have an increase in revenue, and we're at that negative one fifty, um, are you gonna have, well, you're obviously gonna have less money to spend, how is that gonna impact uh, either the development of the park or, um, the new park or somewhere else?
Right, then you have the money to spend, you, you can't develop any.
Right, so that's like, what are you not gonna develop?
Correct.
What are we not going to develop? Like how would that impact us?
Heritage Park right now. The building in the back that I plan to refurbish.
Okay, so Heritage Park is gonna cost more than one fifty, and you're saying the impact will be that we're not gonna refurbish?
Right.
Which building?
Is, is, if you're familiar with the Heritage Park, we relocate all this building uh, from the land that now have houses on. We refurbish two of the building that we ran them out right now. We still have two building in the back that I plan to do one of them.
Okay, and that's going, going to be the only impact that we have?
Right.
Cool. Thank you for clarifying that.
Yes. Yes, we got one more question.
I was, I was prepping, I was prepping to motion, make the motion.
Nope, good, yeah, okay.
I don't have a question. I, I'm gonna approve, uh, move that we approve the suggested, uh, budget amendments.
Second.
We have a first and a second, Madam Clerk.
Motion is to approve net increase to revenues of two million seven hundred three thousand, no, two million seven hundred three thousand seven hundred dollars and net increase to appropriations of three million one hundred sixty-nine thousand nine hundred dollars as presented and summarized by funds in the attachments two and three respectively for our mid-year budget adjustments for tw, fiscal year twenty twenty-two, twenty, I'm sorry. Councilman Jindal?
Yes.
Councilman Rixby?
Yes.
Mayor Burcham Daly?
Aye.
Mayor Duper?
Yes.
Motion carried.
Thank you very much, moving on to the, yes, sir.
Can, can I comment? I would like to thank you, Sonia and her staff. She's been ill these last couple of days, but she's still come in and, and tried to finish this budget, uh, mid-year budget, so thank you. And as you can see, we are doing very good in the general fund. And, uh, I would like to let you know that my goal is to start spending those money to upgrade our infrastructure. For example, we plan to, uh, upgrade our video and audio of this chamber. So hopefully by next city council meeting, I will come back and, and ask you to approve the. So hopefully, by next city council meeting, I will come back and ask you to approve the, the contract. And improvement to, to this facility, and upgrade our, put in the new generators to the facility, so that kind of thing. We need to spend the money to, to improve our, our infrastructure now, so, thank you.
We talked about it, as you know. To freshen up the audio and video equipment is long overdue, so that's good news, thank you.
And then one of the other plans, you guys have had some struggles in the last couple of weeks with internet service, and you're talking about building in some backup plans for some more robust internet coverage and things like that, too, so that's all good. Okay, moving on to the consent calendar.
Hold it.
Oh, second, I got a question.
Yes, first and a second, what other question?
Uh, it's not much of a question, more of a comment. For line items such as number fourteen, can we get a picture in the future of what that looks like?
Landscaping?
Yeah, so like the landscape median, or if we install something, I know with the artwork, you usually have a picture in the portfolio. So for stuff like that, something new, if we can also have an accompanying picture, that would be helpful.
Okay, I thought you were, like, the mayor probably drove by many times.
You know which I have, and now I'm just thinking of, like, which median?
Yes.
But, like, I drive back there every day.
And again, right now, the trees is too small, but eventually it will grow, so.
Comment?
Yes, sir.
On item fifteen, in terms of the notice of completion for rehabilitation at Mountain View Avenue, it kinda boogered up traffic, but it was worth it, it's, it's very nice. The, if you, if you're, if you're going south on Mountain View, and you cross Barton, that used to be three lanes, basically, two going north on, on Mountain View, and one going, yeah, south. I've lived here a long time. And when they paved that, it's still kinda bumpy, and the, the, the force, I don't know if that you need to redo the whole section between Lawton and Benton, uh, no, Barton, but at least drive up and down it a couple of times and decide. It's just, you notice it even more now, that Mountain View is smooth all the way from the freeway to the park, except that one section. It's not emergent, there's no potholes, but.
Yes, we do have a pothole on Mountain View underneath the freeway, uh, because there are the truck traffic that turn north, and, and we are responsible for this pothole, and I can't fix it because I don't get permit from Caltrans, so that's gonna be negative fiscal year budget, so.
They require a permit? To fill a pothole?
Not to fill the pothole, but to fix it, to do it right.
Oh, okay, I see.
Yeah, to, to pothole, we went and fixed it, but.
Now, where, where is the pothole?
It's underneath the freeway, so, so our city boundary is go all the way to the north side of the freeway off-ramp. So the portion, when you exit the eastbound off-ramp from I-ten, and you want to turn left, going north to San Bernardino, that's where all the truck traffic, uh, going north, there's a lot of potholes, so we've been, especially after the rain, so we've been fixing it. And, and so the permanent solution is, I'm gonna remove one lane and put concrete pavement in there instead of asphalt, so.
Our streets are in the best shape of any city I drive in, in the inland empire. San Bernardino, you drive, you drive north on Waterman. Oh, it's awful, yeah, yeah.
That's by design, it's to make it interesting.
Just to increase sales of Jeeps.
Okay, did, we have first and a second on it? Yes, you were the second with the question, okay.
Motion is to approve the consent calendar as submitted. Councilman Jindal?
Yes.
Councilman Rigsby?
Yes.
Mayor Portem Daily?
Aye.
Mayor Duper?
Yes.
Motion carried.
Thank you very much. Moving on to new business, the JPI Annual Board of Directors, July nineteenth.
Again, I'd be happy to go, so. It's at six o'clock in La Palma, and so you had to pass, drive through an hour and a half of traffic, and to get there by six.
Lawyers talking about insurance is really fascinating, so I don't know, you might, somebody else might want that. Think you're a great and consistent advocate.
Just avoid the potholes on the way.
Okay, sounds like we had a consensus on that. Moving on to reports of council members.
Just a question, driving different parts of the city, with all of the rain that we've had, there's a lot of weeds growing, and now's not the time to take them out, I know, but are, are, are we planning on a more robust season of cleaning up our landscaping, based on all the weeds that we're seeing?
Yes, sir. But the problem is, right now, we short three position in public works, so, so I have to hire them first, and then hopefully, we have staff to help mow the lawn and, and remove those weeds, so.
Sounds good, thank you.
All right, I'll jump in real quick. Dr. Leonard and I had the pleasure of attending the grand opening of the Miracle Health Center there on, on Barton, which will house the Lomond Surgical Institute, the Bone and Spine Surgery Center, and the Transit Physical Therapy Business. So they had, it was actually quite a turnout, there was, what'd you say, maybe a couple hundred people there? They had a few food trucks, and it was like a little mini carnival, it was, it was a, a very good party he put on there, so, uh, at the surgical, the spine.
In front of the post office, yeah.
Surgery Center.
How was the, how was the traffic coming out? I mean, did you, did you find that you couldn't make a U-turn?
Well, no, because I actually had to park down the street and walk in because there was no parking, so I didn't have to do any crazy maneuvers to get there.
I don't have a report, but a couple more questions. When is the third hotel opening?
He said soon.
Have you, you went and inspected, oh, you're right?
I did go inspect, they don't have final C O G O, but it should happen within, no call for final.
Okay.
They have a temporary C O G O.
Okay. And just down the street from that, the, what was that, an ophthalmology center that was going in? That seems to be kind of starting and stopping multiple times now.
Yeah, he, 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 um, the, the builder, he's email Lorena and I pretty much every day, so.
Is it weather-related, or?
I don't know, he has a lot of problems, so.
Okay. Cause it's become kind of an eyesore, it's been half-done now for a year.
Wasn't he waiting on Edison, or something?
No. Yeah, he, he emailed us, I took care of it.
Okay.
He went and responded, plus the response, ASAP, your building is a long way to go.
Yeah. Letting the city council's inquiring now, too.
You just wanna know about the restaurant on the roof. Okay, reports of officers. Seeing none, I think we'll adjourn our city council meeting, we already have the housing authority open, so we'll move into that agenda. Any items to be added or deleted?
No, sir.
Okay, this is the opportunity for the public to come forward to speak on any non-agendized item. Seeing, no, okay. Seeing nobody come down, Dick? Nope, we're good, okay. Uh, we'll move on to our scheduled items, which is basically the consent calendar.
Hold it, second.
First and a second, Madam Clerk.
Motion is to approve the consent calendar items on the housing authority as submitted. Councilman Jindal?
Yes.
Councilman Rigsby?
Yes.
Mayor Portem Daily?
Aye.
Mayor Duper?
Yes.
Motion approved.
Thank you very much. Any new business, seeing none, reports of officers, members? None, we'll adjourn that, and we'll open up the successor agency. Any items to be added here?
No, sir.
Okay. Again, for the public comment, anybody who wants to come down? Nope. No, this is your chance. It's, it's frustrating, cause we're at that point, where we're almost there, but I'm, like, entertaining, I don't know why, they're getting irritated with me, I can feel it. Okay, we'll move on, uh, consent calendar.
Hold it.
First and a?
Second.
Second, Madam Clerk.
Motion is to approve the consent calendar items as submitted for the successor agency. Councilman Jindal?
Yes.
Councilman Rigsby?
Yes.
Mayor Portem Daily?
Aye.
Mayor Duper?
Yes.
Consent calendar was approved.
Thank you very much.
Before we adjourn, Milford, can you give us any update on, on the basin that we sit on, and, and what the impact of the last couple, what, three months of rain we've had? It was looking good when we were in the heat of the drought, but I'm assuming it's improving.
Milford Harrison, for the record. Let's just satisfy her, you know, Diane, she's pretty, pretty tough on those things. We, we got a report today, a meeting we had today, and we, and also, Job got a report yesterday, uh, which was an interesting meeting. We have four million acre-feet of water underneath us in the Bunker Hill Basin, and we have capacity for another million without creating, liquefaction in, in high groundwater tables. And there, the way things are looking, we're gonna put a good portion of that in the ground. Interestingly enough, Seven Oaks Dam has hardly anything behind it yet. It's all in the snowpack.
It hasn't melted yet.
That's right, exactly, and it was, obviously, the biggest snowpack we've had in a long time. San Luis Reservoir, which, which is our, one of our main storage reservoirs, is full. By the middle of the next week, they're gonna start releasing water out of San Luis Reservoir. The, I wish I'd brought the chart with me, if I don't know, and I, I do have the chart as of this morning, the, the capacity, and the percentage of capacity. All of the reservoirs in the state are way over their, their percentage, their average percentage for this point in time. And Shasta has come up, and it is Orville's percentage, for its average percentage, and that's the way they, that's the way they judge all of the various reservoirs, but there isn't one in the state that isn't, isn't in excess, and our main one that, that we depend on is Orville, and it's, they're released, they're now releasing from Orville in anticipation of the monster snowpack that we have up there. I mean, the largest snowpack that we've had in twenty years is up there now, so. Now, this storm that's going through is a little warmer than we would all like to have it, because that means it's melting part of the snow, but it is only melting it at the lower levels. It's not, it's not doing anything with the upper Sierras and so forth, so. That's the report I got today. It's very encouraging.
Is the drought over?
We're putting, we just signed a contract for fifty-one million dollars to add to our recharge at the eastern end of the valley. This will create more percolation ponds for the water that will come out of Seven Oaks Dam and Mill Creek, et cetera. And in addition to that, it is going to create a number of areas of additional habitat for primarily the canyon route, that, that's our, that's our biggest, our biggest opportunity.
Best-in-law bid.
I cleaned it up, opportunity. But we also have the Willie Star and East Belvoiria and so forth, and, and up above that now, we have found the spayed-footed toad and the California glossy snake, who are both in the, in the endangered species category, so. We've actually found one, which is very unusual, but that's on the, the new sixteen hundred acres that we purchased, what, which was the Harmony Project, the water district now is that. We're planning on developing it into habitat areas and reservoirs and so forth, so.
Is that good enough?
I, I had a question, is the drought over?
No. No, it's not. Because of the fact that we were, I mean, for the last five years, and it was just a lot of catching up to do. And I, I can't tell you whether at the end of all of this, whether, when there's no more snow, and hopefully in August, whether that, whether that will change, but they're very hit, they're very hasty to establish that it's not, the drought's not over yet. In one, one good rain, one good year, and one good snow doesn't do it, so. What, what the problem is, is that much of the groundwater has been depleted. So it's, I mean, particularly in the Central Valley. The Central Valley is actually sinking because so much groundwater's been taken out, because there hasn't been water above the ground. And a lot of that is being focused now on, on Belvoiria and so forth, so. And then, of course, we have not built that reservoir, the Sights Reservoir, which is across from Orville Dam yet. We could've filled it twice already if we had it built. So that water is going out underneath Golden Gate Bridge, which is just a tragedy. But the rest, rest of the areas doing very nicely now. Basically, the whole state's doing very, very well, but it doesn't erase, basically, twenty years of drought. We've had one good, one good in nineteen, in two thousand and nineteen, we had a really good. But I, I saw the comparison today between this year and nineteen sixty-nine. I don't know if, how many of you remember nineteen sixty-nine, when we blew out two bridges in town and so forth. Twice as much rain fell down this, as, as fallen so far.
We're doing pretty good, no flood, no flooding.
No flooding, exactly. That's because we've had a flood, floodmaster, and he really knows his stuff. Thank you.
All right, thank you guys for coming.